All right, this calls to order. This calls to order the Monday, May 19th, Fairway City Planning Commission meeting. Item number one is meeting minutes. Is there discussion about the previous meeting minutes that was taken for April 28th, 2025? Or a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion we approve the minutes as is written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next item in business is item two, old business. Item A, public hearing for rezoning, updating B-3P development plan and request special use permit, 4100 and 4210 Shawnee Mission Parkway, Fairway, Kansas, submitted by Brian Douglas of MREM Fairway Property Retail LLC on behalf of MREM Property Retail LLC, MREM Fairway Property, LLS, and Fairway AA LLC property owners. Basel or Taylor, do you guys have a staff report that you want to share?
Yes, I recommend moving that toward the end of the meeting and then we'll come back to it.
Because I think everyone in the audience is most likely here for that, though.
Okay, then that's fine.
That's why I think we were going to go ahead and...
Okay, no problem. So, again, I'll let my staff report stand as submitted. Basically, they're updating the development plan and then there's a special use permit application for the use as our indoor recreation. We did get an email from a resident in Roland Park in opposition of the application. I think you guys have a copy of it.
I guess to clarify, I don't think they're completely in opposition. From what I read, it sounded like they wanted to add some requirements so that it would not be a 20-hour fitness center. And then there are some questions on whether there should be a stoplight at that intersection. And then that third point, I wasn't completely clear on, but they're concerned about crossing the road at that location. Is that...
That is correct.
Okay.
And I'm open to questions.
Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. All right, this opens the public hearing for item A, public hearing for rezoning, updating B-3P development plan and request special use permit for 4100, 4200 Shawnee Mission Parkway. Is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this item? Please state your name and address for the record and make sure the microphone's on.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Rooker. We own property, two houses on Brookridge Drive, 4120 Brookridge and 4124. Primary residence at 4124 and 4120 will become our primary once we finish renovation. I grew up on Brookridge. My family moved there in 1973. We were there for the Plaza flood. We have been there through years and years and years of water and flooding and changes in the development behind us. It was Smiley's Golf Course when I was a kid and we played in the green space. I understand progress, I understand development, but tonight, I think you would have seen more people in the room with us but for the amount of water Brookridge took on in that rainstorm this evening. The development that is, our houses, both of our houses are directly across the street from the apartment complex that's been built. We opted not to come address you at the time that development was being proposed because we figured it's been an office park, there are buildings there, you know, changing to apartments from the business use, okay, you know, what are we going to do because it's already been developed? We were so taken aback by the scale of that building and the way it towers over our backyards. We no longer feel like we live in the same residential community that we have always valued. And I have a commute every day to Topeka, I work for the state, and so I head out using the Sheridan Drive access to Shawnee Mission Parkway to make the U-turn, to head west, to make it, with 18th Street shut down, I have to take 635 to get to I-70. The window of opportunity to get out of our residential area to get access to the Parkway is, it's really rough. Something needs to be done. A traffic study ought to be done to refresh with the apartment building in place. I was the state representative for our area and the last time I know of a study that was done was one that I commissioned because we were trying to slow traffic before you, from the west heading east, before you get to that intersection where you've got five different directions of traffic. You've got the merge from Row, you've got Shawnee Mission Parkway, you've got Sheridan, you've got the Business Park and the U-turn. It's a mess already. The apartments will make that a more congested area, but in the mornings for the commute, we get backup from the light at Mission Road, so I actually don't know what the answer is. But I do think it needs to be studied. And I would like to know what kind of studies have been done, the engineering for the water issues, because there's more of that property that used to be green space that's now paved over because the margins of that building were pushed so close to the property lines that it took up space that had previously not been paved over. So, I'm just here to voice those concerns. I'd like to see this process slowed down a bit. I don't, I oppose a vote to approve what's being proposed to add to the activity in that site until we have some reassurances that these issues have been factored in and have been studied, so I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Rooker. I live at 4124 Brookridge Drive. Again, what we didn't realize when we were assured by the elected officials of Fairway was that you would be providing variances or the eligibility to move from a 60-foot to a 20-foot, and that's what I heard from one of the guys on 55th Street named Frank.
So, can you specify what you mean when you say 60-foot to 20-foot?
When you gave them a variance to move the property lines from what the office park was to where the apartment complex are, so now the rental properties are, have expanded, they've gone from what it was 60 feet back to 20 feet, and this is just what I was explained to. Where the parking garage was off of 55th Street, it's now moved up so that you've got living spaces, and I know it's only three stories over there, but you've also agreed to give them a variance for height, which we were not informed of. Again, as my wife explained, we understood that it was a business park and that it's a B-3P or whatever. I don't understand what that is, but we understood that. Now you're asking for retail space next to the Stormwater Catch Basin, which will create more hardscape, and we don't know where that water goes, but I do have a lot of video today of the water. And if nobody here understands what it is, that Catch Basin goes underneath Shawnee Mission Parkway and comes out on our side of the street. And it just flooded, there are new owners in those houses. We used to call it the Nelson House, they hit 89 and moved out. But it's scary and we didn't have any information about what this retail space is. We also understand that you want to put in some sort of recreation space next to the Starbucks. Starbucks is already there with the Squawk Box and we already have residents both in Fairway and in Roland Park who want you to address 55th Street. We want you to address the road right outside of the research center. Anybody else here would have had a construction project that ran stuff into the road like this project has, we'd be fined. If we had the dirt and the debris that flows off of that property, we'd be in trouble, we'd be hearing from Basel. They don't hear anything. We were told to talk to the city about this through the whole development during the concrete pour. I would constantly call Nathan, I would let Melanie know, Mayor Hepplely. I would let, unfortunately, Basel and Bill Stodgill know. Nothing happened. We were then told to call the police. So, when the building restrictions started up and they would start making noise, we'd call. And the police would say, "Well, we're not going to give them a $100 ticket, it's not going to affect anybody." It does, it's a purpose. So, again, I would like to have it slowed down. I would like to know where the water's going to go. I would like to know where the traffic's going to go. I would like to know who is designing the lighting situation so that we keep the lighting on the property. That's not too hard to ask. Don't have it shining across into Shawnee Mission Parkway. Don't have it shining across into 55th Street. Check out units 240 and 3, no, 280 and 380. When you're driving down Shawnee Mission Parkway, you'll see the two screened-in porches, verandas, whatever you want to call them, and you'll see what the light source is. It's an irritation, it's a glare, it's something that's not part of this community. You're even shielding the streetlights on Mission Road. You guys can do better, and I hear that we're going to be discussing streetlights over on 55th Street on the Fairway side? That's another discussion that we should all have. And again, if we didn't have that storm, if we didn't have pending storms coming in, you'd have a lot more people, so I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Staff, do we have access, or is the water report and the traffic report that was already performed, is that available for public?
Yes, it's available, it's on our website. We can send it to anybody that wants it.
So, just for those who are interested, that is all available, that was discussed when we initially approved this development?
Yeah, it's still available under Archives for packets on the website, the May 23rd, 2022, when the original final development plan went through, it's all included on that and it's still posted.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything to speak on? Please state your name and address for the record.
It's Gary Krings, 5525 Neosho Lane, and I second everything the Rookers said. I'm a 33-year resident of the home there. And trying to get out onto Shawnee Mission Parkway, when you can get through the backup from Mission Road, you take your life in your hands turning left, heading west, and certainly the one thing, I can't see tolerating at all is more traffic on there. I mean, it's just inconceivable. My wife takes her life in her hands every time she goes out there and tries to go in there and wait and everything. And I was informed last night, I hadn't really kept up with this, which I should have, but that with more retail space, it would just, makes it just intolerable. Thank you. I'm against it.
Hello, my name is Jay McKnight, 4118 West 55th. I'm directly behind on the north side of the Starbucks. I agree exactly with everything that's been said before. In addition, the lighting, I was told when Starbucks came in that there was going to be a partition to block the lighting from coming directly into my house, and that hasn't happened. The microphones over there from their drive-thru, I can hear it in my house all, as long as they're open. Additionally, now you're trying to do something else, bring another fitness center or whatever it is in that building, we just don't have the capability of the traffic flow, the added traffic flow. So, I would basically say exactly what has been said before. Thank you, and I'm in complete against this.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
My name is Jenny Podebarrick and we live at 4100 Brookridge Drive. I echo the sentiments of everyone who has spoken tonight. Us two were not aware to the degree that this monstrosity that is being built would be as obnoxious all the way around, from construction to the, how large it is, it towers over all of our homes. Before the office building, as Tom mentioned, set back farther, you didn't notice it. Well, now, you can't walk in any part of our house without seeing this building hawking over us. I know at this point it appears to be a mute point, so the question is, has anything changed since it was originally proposed? And, you know, it feels just like a complete invasion to us and disregard for the people in Shawnee Mission, that back up to Shawnee Mission Parkway, like, we don't matter because our backyards are at Shawnee Mission Parkway, so we shouldn't care. But the two biggest concerns that we have, in addition to the noise, the contractors are there all hours of the night making all kinds of noise, hooting and hollering, but the traffic and flooding is really concerning for us on that street. Tonight, this afternoon, with all that flooding, in less than 20 minutes, that creek crested from the creek, went across the empty lot between the two houses in front of our house and covered the street. That's really fast. If you could see how fast that creek is moving, it's really concerning. And then our dry creek completely filled up as well. So then you're going to have more water running off if you add any more covered space. And I think we all know how dangerous flooding can be, and if you've lived on that street as long as we all have, there's nothing more concerning than watching that water start rising and you don't know if it's going to stop. And it's coming to your house and you've spent many a nights cleaning out your basement because it got flooded because of the water rushing from Roland Park. And now we, as a city, Fairway, seems to be a partner in turning the other way and not addressing the water issues, I believe, that are going downstream with this project. I'm completely opposed to any fitness center, especially one that's there where people can come and go all hours, and any other commercial development, as I mentioned, was echoed earlier. Thank you.
Brian Douglas, 5349 Mission Woods Road, Mission Woods, Kansas. I am the applicant, I'm with the group called Platform Ventures. We are affiliated with the ownership of all three of these parcels, the multifamily development, the Starbucks building, as well as the commercial pad next door. One first thanks to staff for exceptional write-up, I think it was very accurately portrayed. Did want to emphasize a few points on that. We kind of view this as a cleanup of what was somewhat of an oversight on the original approval, and we got our entitlements and the rezoning in place. What actually ended up happening, and I respect the city's interpretation of the documents, but what ended up happening was actually a more restricted set of uses on the Starbucks building in terms of permitted uses. So, want to remind everybody here that, again, this isn't a referendum on the multifamily development. The task at hand right now is, what we're asking for is an expanded set of permitted uses for the commercial retail space that already exists, is already constructed on property. Second thing to point out, you know, what we're trying to do by this expanded set of permitted uses is just get to a more conventional structure. It's very unusual that you would have a single unit in a multi-tenant building specifically zoned for a specific use. So, in the case of the Starbucks building, the east end end cap can only be a restaurant right now, which is very unusual, and the middle space can only be retail. You can't flip-flop that. You can't have a restaurant in the middle space, you can't have retail on the end. And so, basically, what we did in this revised proposal for the revised set of permitted uses, or expanded set of permitted uses, was we used the basis of the existing Fairway code for what we consider that building to be, which is neighborhood retail. So, we used that to build the universe of acceptable uses, which is much more in conformance with how properties like that are zoned and operated. The final thing to point out is, on the multifamily development, we've got a small retail space on the west side of the building. Right now, as it's currently zoned, and right now, as it's currently approved within the documents, there are no permitted uses assigned in that space. So, if we had any tenant tomorrow that wanted to sign up, there isn't a permitted use that is allowed currently. And so, it's basically unleaseable space as it stands today. So, we're trying to come here today with an omnibus proposal and an omnibus revision to what exists today to expand the set of permitted uses so we have a marketable commercial space for all of the developments on site. In response to a few things that came up in previous discussions, we have already provided, as staff pointed out, a traffic study that contemplates the transformation of the former office building, which was 150,000 square feet of office, to the 210 or so units of multifamily. What we've proved through that, through that traffic study, was a less intense usage from a traffic standpoint. Additionally, on the water study standpoint, we also proved that we have less impervious area on our total development site, and that is something that we've been held to throughout the course of this project. So, these downstream effects, while I understand they're real and they're complex, we've already gotten approval based on those two items. I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any on the commission.
How, so what are their concerns that you're asking to put out? Exercise facility maybe in the Starbucks building or in the apartment building? Don't you think that would create more traffic, especially at night, people working in there and the lights shining over across the...
We don't believe there's going to be a material impact, so the way those traffic studies are calculated and configured, they kind of throw up a function at a use category. So, we consider, you know, for a 1,500-square-foot user, that eventually goes fitness, that there won't be a material impact on the traffic study with that type of use in place. We'll note that the original traffic study contemplated a multi-use commercial, commercial building there, so it's already factored in traffic patterns and traffic usage for that type of use and that intensity of use at that property.
Was there anything in your traffic study that talked about the needs or requirements to have any kind of a crosswalk across the area from those apartments to Roland Park?
Yes, so, I mean, that was ultimately the takeaway from the traffic study, that a traffic light was not warranted at that 55th intersection with Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Who determined that? Was that, your study did that, or was that the state?
That was the traffic engineer that commissioned, or that was in charge of producing the report. And so, basically, you know, just to give everybody context, we ran a relative analysis between, all right, well, what used to exist there before redevelopment, there was 150,000 square foot office building and a 5,000-square-foot restaurant on this site, right? And so, they ran calculations based on, all right, well, if you had full daytime population, you've got five people per thousand square feet in the office building, so you have 700 people potentially coming and going from that property as well as residual traffic, and then you have an office or a retail user or a restaurant user for the 5,000 square feet. So, they run their calculations, they run their daily trip calculations, and we compared that to what if we switched this now to a 210-unit multifamily development and 6,500 square feet of retail? And, you know, based on those functions that the traffic engineer uses to calculate these daily use patterns, they determined that there was less intense usage in terms of traffic visits to the site with the new development. And so, because of that, they also ran that and discussed whether there was a warrant for a traffic light at Shawnee Mission Parkway and 55th Street, and they found there was not a warrant for that.
Wouldn't there be a difference, I mean, between what was there, the office complex? People drive in there and they're basically there for the day, and with this new retail and the Starbucks, there could be people coming in from the outside that wouldn't have been coming. Very, I imagine, very few people ever walked up to that office complex to go to a meeting.
Yeah, and I grant that, and the counter to that is, there was a 5,000-square-foot restaurant that was on the corner of that property previously. So, really, your relative comparison is between what is the daily usage and daily traffic count for a 5,000-square-foot restaurant in that building or 6,500-square-foot multi-tenant application as it exists today? So, that's already been figured and calculated.
I do remember discussing that in depth because that was a big concern of mine.
Yeah, I know, and...
So, the traffic report stands. I mean, it is available, it sounds like, online to the public, and so, they are, we're happy to answer questions on that, to the extent that they exist, and, but, you know, we're going back a couple of years to...
Well, I'd like to have your opinion. Now, a lot of these people are here concerned about the water, but you're saying what was there before was more covered and probably had put more water across into their neighborhood than the new complex?
We ran an impervious area calculation on the new development versus the previous development. Yes. So, we ran, we had our architect run an impervious area calculation on our plan set for the new development versus what existed previously. And even though the size and the scale vertically looks like it's much more than what existed before, because it is, the actual area and the impervious area that is covering is less than what existed before because if you, you know, if you really looked down like a bird's eye view of it, there was a 350-stall parking garage on that northwest corner that was, you know, totally covered the area. And so, that was a metric that we were almost designing to, to make sure that we were below the previous impervious area on the new development. And obviously, the implication on that is, the more impervious area you have, the more storm runoff you have to the creek systems and everything else, and so, that was obviously a major concern when we got our original approval and something that we stayed below on what was eventually...
Now, I didn't witness, but these folks are saying there was more runoff. Do you think that could be contributed to maybe the construction process and there's more, you know, maybe the drainage isn't as it will be when it's completed, you know?
All I, I don't know what their experience was, but what I can tell you is, we were paying very special attention to how much impervious area is on our site. That's what we can control, right? And so, if we had added more parking field, more concrete, more asphalt, and increased the impervious area on our development, it's logical to expect that the downflow effects would be more significant than if we did the opposite. And so, that's all I'm going to comment on there. I don't know what their experience was.
Yeah, I think it's, we need to be careful about commenting on the specific storm as we don't know what the total rainfall was.
Well, no, I just was trying to give him, get him to give an answer that maybe would give these people a little bit of relief to think, yeah, well, we didn't cover more of the site, there's more pervious area and less impervious area than there was before. And so, this may have been just, I mean, it was a really sudden, fast storm. So, we're all kind of learning about this together. All the questions I have?
Questions? Just jog my memory here, I think when we were reviewing this, part of the discussion about the traffic planning was the fact that it wouldn't be like a typical commuter pattern, it would be more attenuated throughout the day because it's not an office use, so you wouldn't have a morning and afternoon rush crunch. Is that correct?
I think that was a point that was made, is that, you know, if we're designing traffic flow for an office building, I think you can reasonably make the assumption that 90% of your workforce is showing up at or around 8:00 and 90% of your workforce is going home at 5:00. And so, your traffic patterns are, you know, much more intense in those periods, right? And so, part of, part of, I think, the benefit of switching over to multifamily is that, well, we've got 210 units, maybe we've got 300 residents, maybe half of them are working, half of them aren't, and so, yes, you're spreading out that traffic visit and utilization time across the day, which means that in the high-traffic-flow times of, you know, 8:00 AM, 5:00 PM, you actually have less flow on the system or less impact on the system.
Second question relates to screening for lighting. I know some of the expressed concerns today of the attendees is that there's been some light intrusion, pollution, however you want to call it, into the residential area. Was there any plan, or is there any plan now to sort of ameliorate that condition?
To my knowledge, we're in conformance with all of the visual light standards as it exists today.
Thank you.
To that point, can you speak to the comment about the Starbucks having the partition that may or may not be there?
Yeah, I'm confused with the terminology of partition. I don't think we ever agreed to a partition. Not sure that's exactly what those residents actually want. You know, it sounds like partition is a solid wall of some sort. So, we never at any time had offered to design towards that. What we did offer was for visual screening, and there is a line of bushes and trees that we implemented in place there to try and cut down on that noise pollution.
All right, if you could state your name, and I know you've come back, you have to come back up and speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
I apologize, but trees 15 feet apart are not a partition in any way, shape, or form. And the other question that I have on the traffic study, did it account for drive-through service nonstop, all day long?
And can you state your name again, so just for the record?
Jay McKnight, 4118 West 55th.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Brian Douglas, I don't know. I don't think the traffic study contemplated that specific use, although I can't comment on it, I'm not sure. The other point to make, again, to my knowledge, we are in compliance with all sound issues at the site.
Any other questions from staff or for the commission? All right, thanks. Will you state your name again so we know?
Melissa Rooker, 4124 Brookridge Drive. I think there's a difference between compliance and courtesy. And there's no courtesy. This construction site, you heard from Jenny how intrusive the construction process has been, the round the clock, the noise, the, we've had more intrusions on our street. We've had material, like, we've just had incidents. The lights, I, I, we've gone round and round with the city over the lighting on this building. All we're asking for are lampshades on the exterior lights so they aren't beat straight across the street, but there's a shade so they accomplish the purpose of lighting the property without lighting up all of our bedrooms. It's a matter of courtesy. Nathan has made it about foot candles. So compliance-wise, you bet you're in compliance, I have no doubt, but you are not being a good neighbor to the rest of us. If you want to come into our community and, and fill it up with, with new neighbors, we expect some courtesy for the, the quality of life that we all expect and enjoy from living in Fairway. They are not being good neighbors at the moment. And the battle over whether or not the lights violate a specific foot candle, when these are LED lights illuminating, foot candles were developed 100 years ago, incandescent lights. It's apples and oranges, and it's a nuisance. And the lack of courtesy that we as residents are being met with is troubling to say the least.
I just want to make one more comment on that. When they originally proposed the landscaping and all that, I did bring up my concerns because they are above us, their lights go straight into our house. It's not like on Shawnee Mission Parkway where they're going below the fences. And I was assured that there would be proper landscaping done. And then when it was done, it was not, it was not even, it's not even where homes are, in my opinion. And I did bring it up again, and at that point, it was too far along in the process and we couldn't do anything. But to her point also, and again, emphasizing the monstrosity of this project, not only are they up on a hill, now you've let them build this high, and there are residents there 24/7. It's not like an office building where they come and they're just during the day. They're 24/7, weekends, day, night. You're going to have a lot more intrusion, intrusion to the residents who are living on and in and around that area. And I don't think any of us realized it was going to be to the magnitude that it is. And I do echo, I don't appreciate the fact that they're more concerned about, you know, being in compliance with what is written on paper than being good neighbors. I just find that unfortunate for us as a city who value our residents, I presume, that we aren't being more careful about approaching how we're really offending our residents.
Will you state your name and address for record again?
Johnny Pogger Bear, 4100 Brookridge Drive.
Hi, I'm Martha Danellewitz at 4117 Brookridge Drive. I am mostly concerned about the water problems that we have. I have had two cars totaled in flooding at my house since I moved here 29 years ago. You, I don't see how it's possible to increase, decrease the frontage so that the pavement is closer to the parkway, decreasing green space, and have less runoff? That makes no sense. This is a property damage issue. It's also a life safety issue. People try to drive through this stuff. We've had one police car lost because they drove through it. This is not only inconsiderate of the neighbors, a property damage issue, and I'm talking about the flooding only, not the light. I live on the south or the opposite side of Brookridge. I still see those lights all night, every night. But just addressing the water, it's not only a property damage issue, it is a life safety issue. And being in compliance, I have to question that. If there was a water study done and it was approved, it needs to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Any other comments? Just state your name and address again.
Sure. Tom Rooker again, 4124 Brookridge Drive, again. So the question is, how did FEMA weigh in? Because I haven't looked at it yet. And the other thing is with this traffic study, how did the state of Kansas weigh in on the highway? Again, I haven't read it yet, but I will, I'll look at it. So those are the two things. And have they revisited this since 2022, I'm assuming? And how are we going to get to that point of being good neighbors if somebody's looking at supposedly 300? Okay, so maybe we have 300 cars, doubtful. And then we have service. And then we have, I believe we have a yoga studio. I believe we have a kitchen demo facility in there. I believe we have a social hall. I believe we have a pub. I believe we have a second restaurant area off on the second floor of the apartment complex. I believe on the third floor next to the restrooms, there's something else, I forget. But you're going to have staff. You're going to have, not necessarily Willy dumpsters where you want to put your retail space, but where the cherry pickers are right now. You're going to have people coming in and out. Now, the office complex that was there, I've only been around since 1981, was a class, it started out as a class B, went to a class C. So yes, that small office space where we used to have the Fairway City Hall was not very busy. And again, Stroud's was not a morning place like Starbucks is, did not have a big afternoon crowd like Starbucks does, but did do a lot of takeout and did decent there and wanted to renew their lease, but the owners didn't want Stroud's to go there again. So Starbucks has a morning, noon, and night. If you allowed Starbucks to be 24 hours, I wouldn't doubt that they would have it. But we already have retail business space. We have it over in Roland Park. We have a business district in Fairway in which we're probably going to be losing some spaces right over here once Hen House moves out. So there's ample opportunity to have nearby facilities without trying to complicate a space over there, even though it may be zoned. Don't fill it up with everything that's wrong with the development right now that unfortunately, we took the word of our city representatives and we trusted them. And that was my big mistake. And it's just not working out. Because you can does not mean you should. Because you don't want to have, lose some revenue for some new retail space, which hasn't been approved yet, as he explained, it hasn't been designated as something. How about nothing? How about, let's find out from the Corps of Engineers, since the entire city has a contract with FEMA to keep that water area out and to not put any of the permanent building or structures on there. And we're already in violation of that. Let's just keep, find out what happens when this water runoff, because now we actually have a structure there and it's not theoretical. See what happens. Like you said, we'll find out what the water rate was, and we'll be able to tell what that runoff was. And we have engineers other than somebody that was hired to do this. But I would love to hear from the state. I would love to hear from the government of FEMA. And let's just see what they say nowadays, because this is 2025 and a half. This isn't 2022. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, this closes the public hearing. Discussion? I guess maybe just as a reminder, the discussion is whether we're rezoning this area to allow for multiple uses. Staff, could you maybe just reiterate what the discussion is specifically about?
Yes, so the purpose of the application is to use the space they have for more than just a restaurant, how it was submitted earlier in the development plan.
And this is not building any new facilities? This is just rezoning?
It's just rezoning an interior space to use the space other than a restaurant.
Okay.
Is that for the Starbucks building?
That's correct.
And, and the multifamily?
And the tenant space in the apartment building. There is one tenant space there.
Can I make a clarification? Even though it is titled rezoning, the zoning remains the same. We just have to follow the rezoning process to update the development plan, to change those labels of those units. So the zoning remains the same.
Okay.
We're just updating the plan.
But if there's just two spaces at Starbucks, and is there only one space in the new apartment complex that's?
That is correct.
And so what's all the different options? I mean, from the yoga to the exercise facility? I mean, they can't have all those things. Are they just trying to cover all their options and get first guy who will sign up?
That is correct. So, I mean, the original submittal indicated on the plans that it's a restaurant use. And so we were restricting them from putting a different use in that space. So that's the whole purpose of this application, is to allow them to do a different tenant.
So Basel, just for clarity, I guess, this, this might shed some light on this. So essentially, there's a development agreement, probably had some wider, wider range, maybe a plan, final plan was submitted that showed a restaurant. So we assumed there was a restaurant, it was locked in. Now they're just coming back saying, hey, we want to match what the development plans suggested.
That is correct.
Okay.
And the special use permit is, in our regulation, is if you go to this type of use, we have specific uses that you have to come to planning commission to get a granted special use permit.
Okay.
For that use.
Okay. Which is separate from the zoning, correct?
Which is separate from the zoning. That's correct.
One concern I know we've talked about in the past is opening it up to just anything, like a massage parlor versus like a massage therapy location. How are we protected from just?
But we do have those restrictions already built in in our code.
Okay, so we are already limited to?
That is correct.
Is that, how long is that list? Is that something you could read? Or is it here?
That's part of the building code, I mean.
Perfect. Okay.
Well, it, it seems to me that these people all have valid concerns, but we've already approved this development plan and they've already built the Starbucks. And for us to tell them it's a restaurant to die, wouldn't, wouldn't be fair play for us. Or to allow them to put something other than this list of things into that other space that they have, wouldn't be fair play for us, because I'm sure they've figured those leasable tenant spaces into their budgets and how they're going to make this whole thing perform for them. But it seems like, is there some other way we can address, not, not to curtail this process, but to address the problems of the water runoff and the traffic, which I, I think, I personally felt like when they came in and said, it's not going to be a big traffic problem. We don't need a light, we don't need a stop sign, we don't need no left turn signs. I kind of felt like, wow, this is really an optimistic study. I mean, and even the state highway says, oh, you don't need anything. Their highway's fine. But it seems like it's not all that fine. I mean, even, even clear down on my street on Norwood, if I tried to come out on Shawnee Mission Parkway at certain times of the day, it's like, forget it.
Which, so I agree with all that you're saying. I think we questioned the traffic at the time. Water has been an issue for City of Fairway for as long as I've lived here.
Forever.
I don't think this development is causing the water to be, I mean, it's always been a problem. And maybe, from the water study, it said it is not contributing to it, so I can't speak and say that it is or not, other than what the water study has shown. But both of those are concerns of Fairway residents regardless of this development, in my opinion.
Right. And that, that's what I'm trying to say, too. It's, those are serious problems that need to be addressed, but it's not, it's not really tied to this issue, this issue. This, this has already been approved and baked into the deal, and we're just kind of giving them a little bit more options of what they could put in there.
And I would say I felt like we did our due diligence during the first process of asking these questions and reviewing the reports and questioning what we saw to make sure that we understood it. So those reports are available online. Please, please step up, because she's going to have difficult hearing. It is available online and it has been online since, I believe, the packet was posted prior to the meeting.
Tom Rooker, 4124 Brookridge Drive, Fairway, Kansas. What we used to have was notification for all the residents nearby. And what we discovered recently is that it's within a 200-foot, what is that, next, within 200 feet of the property line. And so fewer people get the notifications. And some of us were probably working and didn't go if we even got that notification. Point in fact, during the, the concrete pour, we didn't get notified for the first pour. So of course, I was panicking middle of the night when they started the pour and they turned on all the lights. So, yeah, you might have done the traffic study, but you didn't have any community input because you limited it to 200 feet away from the property lines. So we're hoping that maybe we have a broader discussion. Maybe you postpone this for a minute. Maybe we look at it, maybe we find out in 2025 again what the study is for the water flow, because 2022 was a long time ago. And again, an entire community will want to look and review that, including John, the lawyer across the street from me. So, who contacted Pozzinali about this. So, yeah, we need some time to look at what you have already done. Thank you.
Just for the record, when the development came, there was community hearings that was done here before the planning commission. So there were multiple meetings before that. The whole city was sort of, constant contact was sent out for the meetings. And then there was the hearing, and it was a public hearing for the rezoning. So that was all established. Everybody that needed to be notified was notified.
Jay McKnight, 4118 West 55th. I have yet to receive anything from them. And I don't know if it's because it's, I'm considered Roland Park and this is Fairway, but I'm the width of a street from, from property line to property line. Back in 2020, 21, whenever they started doing this, I still didn't get anything. One of my neighbors, and I'm not sure which one of them, actually put a, a copy of this letter in my door. That's why I'm here tonight. It had nothing to do with something that I was notified of or received from the city.
All right, any other discussion or questions? Oh, sure. Just?
Um, sure, just, just.
You guys are where we are at the side of the public hearing.
This will be the last thing, but, one more point, Johnny Podjaber, forty-one hundred Brookridge Drive, in regards to the traffic. I called the city multiple times, and, because when you go down Fifty-Fifth Street, heading west, and you pull out from that KU area, there was a blind spot, because you come over the, or you're coming out from the side and traffic is coming from Starbucks towards Row, Rowland Park. And, um, my husband goes to work every day that way, and about gets side swiped by people climbing over the hill, and they allowed them to park all along there. So, with just that, and me, I even talked to police officers, no one seemed to be able to figure it out, and, and they would never even move the signs, as I suggested, the signs be moved more up the hill, so it's not dangerous. But I feel like, my point in bringing that up again, is I feel like, well, everyone's just going, well, this is already approved, you guys just have to suck it up and deal with it. I understand that, but I will, it would feel like you guys would be a little more thoughtful about us and the issues now that we're having to deal with. None of us, I don't think any of us on that street realize the magnitude of that. We've lived, we've lived there since two thousand and one, we've seen businesses come and go, never been an issue like this. This is beyond what I thought Fairway could ever be possible to put in. It's just too intrusive to the neighborhood and the nice little community that we live in.
Don't you think it'll be better once the construction is over? And it quiets down to just a?
I'm hopeful, but if you were to come to my house in my backyard, it looks like a ginormous cruise ship just pulled up in our backyard. That's what it feels like, that's what it looks like.
And no one's living there.
And no one's living there, yeah, but all the construction people yelling and carrying on and shining their lights, and they don't care, they do not care that they're in a neighborhood working. Yes, I would love for you guys to come to my?
Please, say your name and address for the record if you're going to speak. All right, any further discussion?
Just, uh, thoughts, I guess, and, and I'm not sure what the mechanism for this is. So I remember, I think it was my first planning meeting when we had the, when we had the proposal for this, and it included the runoff. I'm wondering what the mechanism might be, if it's possible, um, to look at that initial, have a, have a third party or somebody look at that initial, uh, stormwater report, and the traffic study for that matter, um, to either validate that, once this construction project is complete, that, that report is accurate. I suspect that some of the issues are exacerbated by the construction, but I can't say for certain. And I know that, so the traffic study would have been based off of some assumed usage or square footage and those types of calculations. I wonder if it's possible, um, to commission some sort of report based on the actual proposed uses, um, or something of that matter. I, I guess, in our case right now, um, we talk about, uh, the, you know, the issue at hand, however, given the, um, concerns that are noted, I wonder if it's our opportunity to, to do those, that type of due diligence. Kind of a question, kind of a, kind of a comment, I'm not sure what the options are there.
I mean, is that something we would recommend to the city council? I mean, we can't just pay for that, right? But could we recommend that to city and they could consider it?
So, under the code, you can recommend with conditions. The conditions do need to relate to the question that you're being asked to consider here today, which is whether or not the uses should be, um, expanded to include the lists that's set forth under the development plan, um. And, and so if, if, if it relates to the issue that you're considering here today, or that the governing body will eventually and ultimately consider, that's a condition that you can put on. A traffic study could be a condition if it relates to expanded uses in?
So, yes, if I understood that right, we could, we could recommend either validation or a new traffic study be done with the proposed uses, but since no new structures are being proposed, we couldn't recommend a look at the stormwater. Is that true?
Um, that's something that I would want to look at a little bit further, as far as if we could consider that under the code. Um, I do think a traffic study relates to the issue at hand, um, I would need to look a little bit further to see if a watershed study would relate to what we're considering here today.
But does that put a traffic study on the applicant to provide, or the city? Because I think if that puts it on the applicant, then we're not accomplishing what everyone's wanting to see, so it would have to be provided by the city. Right, a third party, right? Because if the applicant were to provide it again, then I don't, I think that we'd get the same, potentially the same result. So if we do that, is this saying the city can pay for it, or is it saying the applicant pays for it?
I would have to look at that.
I think it would have to almost be a recommendation to the city.
That would, that would be my, my, what I'm used to is maybe like a, a third-party review of the traffic study and/or a new traffic study be done. So that would be, and you may want my recommendation with regard to, to this.
I think within regard to the traffic study too, it might be wise to look at more of a peak hour versus, you know, if it's, if the previous study was more of a general capacity, if it is an issue with the Starbucks already in the morning, that we don't add to that with another usage that would have a peak hour, you know, at the same time.
I think, just along those lines, I think, um, you know, now that some of this has been built and some of it's in use, although not all of it, you do have a little bit more real-world data to use for such a study, it's a lot different than theoretical, so anyway, that's another reason why I think it would, having driven over to that Starbucks myself, it is pretty crappy.
Yeah, I think it would be relevant though after the development is maybe, um, let people living in it, because that's going to actually create the car count that you would want to mimic, right? So that would be maybe later this year, when it's occupied. In terms of the lighting, um, I don't know, maybe this is a question for the applicant, is there anything that can be done to address concerns from the public?
Yeah, so, Brian Douglas, five-three-four-nine Mission Woods Road. Um, to address the contractor question, there are very strict guidelines in terms of when they can work. Um, we're largely in conformance with that. Um, there were a few special requests where we had overnight pours, um, that fell outside of those hours, but those were communicated through Basel and, and the staff, so, um, that's my response on that item. In terms of light pollution, honestly, I haven't had any complaints, so I, I, I'm not prepared with a response on that. Um, understand their concerns on it, um, obviously there's, um, you know, light that's emanating off of the building today, uh, but I can pull, you know, it's, it's strictly guided, there, there are lighting guidelines that we are, again, in conformance with, as we design the building, as we put forth our electrical plan, as we get it approved at the city level, everything's in conformance. So again, I, I can't speak to someone's experience that's across the street or adjacent to this property, um, but we're strictly governed by a set of guidelines and codes. So I can, I can pull that data, I can tell you what we designed to, I can ask our engineers to provide that list, um, I can put it out to the, um, PC, to be posted online or to the public, but, um, there, there's a very strict process that you run through to ensure that you're in compliance there. I don't know, any, any other questions? I mean, I, I guess it, you know, to, to the watershed, in terms of some stipulations, um, updated traffic report is, again, I, we would, we would suggest to you, it's an immaterial impact, we're happy to update a traffic report, um, if this is approved with conditions to council to validate that point, um, so if that's something that you guys wish to impose, we're happy to, to comply with that. On the watershed analysis, I think that's a little trickier, again, I think we'll, you know, kind of stick on one point, there's no additional construction being added to the site, period. You know, the watershed analysis that was completed when we had our, our plans approved a couple of years ago, um, I think still stand, um, and, you know, I can, I think we, we proved through the plans, impervious areas going down, that was the, that was the stipulation and the hurdle that we were being held to on that, and we proved that. So to the extent we want to dig up that document and validate that, we can do it, um, but I just want to make sure that we're focused on, on the right issues at hand here, right? So there's no additional development going on site, there's no additional impervious area going on site. We've had this discussion ad nauseam several years ago, there were a lot of questions on it, we answered those questions, we got our approvals, and it seems like an overstretch to be retroactively kind of clawing back on that approval three years later. If there's an updated traffic study that's warranted or requested, happy to provide that.
Thank you.
Could that be, could you provide that by a third party? I mean, somebody other than the first guy that did it?
It was a woman, just for the record.
Okay, first person.
Uh, I mean, uh, listen, it's, it's, it's the same calculation. Um, if it's, you know, they're, they're held to the same formulas, the same standards, the same process, the same approach, the, the use categories are dictated by, you know, a book that has the calculation, so if they're using the same uses, they're using the same functions and the same formulas, and the output's going to be the same. That's just my view of the world. Um, we've got a, a, a well-heeled, um, group that provided, I forget the name offhand because I didn't pull the report before I got here, um, I think the, the quickest way to get the answer is to provide updated use categories to the group that has all of the data, uh, let them run their numbers and put it in front of, of the commission or the council for approval, or review and approval.
Thank you. I think that if we really want to accomplish reviewing it, we, it has to be a, a third-party, not affiliated with a contractor. I fear that if it's affiliated with a contractor, then that will not accomplish our goal. That's my thought on that.
Would agree, would agree with that.
And the methodologies may be the same, um, but just, it's for, you know, appearances of propriety, have a third-party contract, but again, it may be the same methodology, but that will come out.
Okay, so, re- summary, we're discussing whether to accept these, uh, changing the uses of these locations, this, uh, space, so there's a couple spaces that we're looking at. So the question at hand is, are we accepting that change? If there is a decision also to include a traffic study, I think that would be a recommendation to city to prov, because this will go before city next, correct?
Yes.
So that could be incorporated into this? We could also have the contractor do it, but again, I think it has to be a third-party if we're going to assess the study that's already taken place.
What's our next? We stayed a motion, is that our next?
Correct. I guess I did have one question, is there a, um, a hours of operation on this fitness type facility that we're discussing?
Uh, we were not given any information.
Okay. Sorry, I guess I have one more question. Is, is there going to be an hours of operation limit on these facilities, or will any of the facilities be twenty-four hours?
Brian Douglas, five-three-four-nine Mission Woods Road, um, not to my knowledge, uh, I don't believe any of the users are anticipating being twenty-four hour users.
So if we were to limit them to not be twenty-four hours?
I think reasonable limits, um, would be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. So that is something that we've heard, um, in that email that we received about concerns about twenty-four hour fitness, so maybe including in our recommendation of reasonable hours, so that we're not allowing something like that to be a twenty-four hour space.
If we say not a twenty-four hour space, do we have to specify limits, or how does that work?
I think we do need to specify.
Yes.
Maybe it's like five AM to, I don't know. Yeah, I guess I'd have to think about it.
That's what?
I mean, we could definitely, could we say at least that it can't be open twenty-four hours? I mean, that would at least limit them from running a twenty-four hour operation.
About if we said during normal working hours, unless they come back and ask for approval to extend, extended hours? Because we don't know if they would say, we want to work from five to seven at night, or five to nine, or five to eleven, or five to four-thirty?
They've just put the onus back on us to review it every time they change their hours, though.
Does anybody know what hours the Starbucks is open?
Starbucks, uh, Brian Douglas, five-three-four-nine Mission Woods Road. Starbucks, to my knowledge, is open at five AM, um, I don't know when they close down. Uh, I don't love the idea of normal working hours, because a, you know, kind of normal working operating hours of a fitness center is going to be very different than normal working hours of somebody in an office. Um, so I, I like a range, um, something that's reasonable and, you know, allow some operational flexibility for the user, but totally understand the point, um, of restrictions on twenty-four hour use. Uh, we'll point out, the apartment building next door is going to be a twenty-four hour operating facility, so I think we're splitting hairs here a little bit, um, but understand the concerns.
What, what would you propose as a good timeframe? Five in the morning till?
Four AM till midnight. As a wide band for multiple users and operators, and so, again, um, when there's a small change in operations, uh, for the next tenant, or whoever it is down the line, we're not having a city hearing, meeting to talk about a half-hour change.
Taylor, a quick clarification, is this time period we're discussing just specific to the fitness for the special use permit? Because I believe the Fairway code itself has structured hours for different retail uses and types within the code already, so this would just be for the special use permit for the fitness center that they're putting a time period on? That's my understanding, is that?
Does the code already address fitness centers?
N- no.
No, okay, so that's why we would need it for the special, okay, just double checking. Okay.
So I just looked up similar sort of neighborhood, uh, it's not the same thing, but frame of reference, Woodside and Westwood is open five AM to ten PM. So I think that seems like a reasonable.
Please say your name and address for the record.
Tom Rooker, forty-one twenty-four Brookridge Drive. According to Starbucks, uh, website, they're open at four-thirty in the morning.
Does it say when they close?
Nine PM.
Nine PM.
I mean, one thing to note, their operating hours will be different than when people are present in the facility as well, so we're, we're setting the operating hours, correct? Which may be different than when employees are present, working.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I just wanted to clarify, because if we establish a time and then they show up before that and someone's like, well, there are people there, understood, but they may have to prep for their work so that they're available when it opens. Okay, so, discussing the usage, um, providing a limit on, um, operation hours. I feel like I'm missing, oh, the traffic study, would be a recommendation to the city to provide a review of the current study. to provide a review of the current study, or provide another study, I suppose, however we want to stipulate that.
So, this is a?
Sorry?
I just want to clarify, for purposes of preparing your motion, you will need to, it can be one motion, but you will want to address the uses and your recommendation for the uses and any conditions associated with that, and then the recommendation for the special use permit, which is incorporated into the ordinance that would ultimately, if approved, approve the uses. So, you'll just need to make sure the motion addresses both approval or approval with conditions, or denial of the uses, as well as the special use permit, and then whether you're recommending approval, approval with conditions.
So, we have to approve each use?
You don't have to approve each use, but you will need to approve the changes to the development plan, which addresses the uses, and then you'll separately need to address the special use permit and any conditions related to that.
Okay. So, that's when we can address the operating hours?
Correct. My understanding is that they do have a proposed tenant that will be using the space, and we may need to clarify that with the applicant, but that is my understanding.
But to your point, they would have had to come back and get the use approval, they just would get the special use permit.
Correct. I'm happy to look through right now quickly and see if I can find anything, but not to my knowledge that that was addressed in the development agreement.
Again, though, if it's being provided by the contractor, I don't think it would, we would still need a third party to review it to give a second opinion, essentially. Because if it comes back and says everything's fine, and there's someone that disagrees with it. All right, any other comments before we propose a motion? Just what I've heard tonight is that there hasn't been any concern with the actual usage of the spaces. It's been more about the condition of the property, the lighting, traffic, and so we're doing our best to address those concerns with this motion, but we're also trying to stick to the item that's at our review and make sure that we're addressing that correctly as well. Is there something you'd like to say for the record?
I think we would love to be led in. Melissa Rooker, 4124 Brookridge Drive. I think we're curious who the tenants that they're supposedly in line to lead, like, I don't think we know enough about what is proposed to understand the ramifications, quite honestly. There's been so little information shared. So, if there's a tenant that this special variance is being proposed for, it would be helpful to know who that is and what kind of business that is. I gather it's a fitness center. I don't know, there's just, again, it's, while the development that you all are considering, the zoning questions may not be changing the contours of the building. The building as it was built received some variances after that study was conducted, the water plan and the traffic plans. It's our understanding there were variances offered, and the margins of the built environment extended. We all know there's green space missing now for the existing structure. So, to dismiss those concerns because a 2022 water study was conducted, it just doesn't feel like the right considerations are being recognized. We are asking, whatever, regardless of what happens with this vote tonight, this tenant needs to be a better neighbor to all of us. The concerns over the lighting are real, whether they violate city code or not. There's just a whole range of things. It's about courtesy, it's about coming into what has been largely a residential community and being a good neighbor in the process of progress. That's all. Thank you.
Brian Douglas, 5349 Mission Woods Road. Just in response to the question, whoever's running the screen did a great job. We addressed this in terms of who the tenant was related to the SUP, was in the public packet that was posted online.
I mean, besides what's listed? Group classes, private training, strength and sculpting, cardio, recovery, and stretching. Okay, is there any discussion, or does someone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the change to the development plan. I will also make a motion that we approve the special use permit for the hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I will also recommend a traffic study by a third party.
Did we capture everything properly? Like, did we address your concerns?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, next item of business, item three, new business, site plan review for 6033 Delmar Fairway, Kansas. Submitted by Dan Quigley of Quigley Custom Homes LLC on behalf of Jacob and McKenna Lincoln, property owners, request for a new family, single-family residence with exception request for width of driveway and window hierarchy on the right facade. Thank you for your patience. Basel, will you please provide your staff report?
I'll let my report stand as submitted. There are two exceptions that's required. One is for the hierarchy on the right elevation facade, and then the other one is the width of the driveway. Again, staff is opposed to the exceptions. We did receive a late email from a neighbor in support of the application, and I'm open to questions.
Any questions for staff?
Did the applicant say why they needed a wider drive?
We did have a communication, and I never heard back from the applicant, so regarding, there was some discrepancy regarding the height, and so, the applicant here, maybe he can answer your question.
Would the applicant please come forward to answer a few questions? Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, everyone, I'm Dan Quigley, 9109 Fontana Street in Prairie Village, Kansas. Quigley Custom Homes. So, today, I'm back here in Fairway, good to be back. Haven't built homes in Fairway for about four years, so I did, I think, 12 in a stretch period of time, so I was used to the rules, and I liked to work with the staff, Abby and some of the predecessors to Basel, and we mean and always do try to follow the rules as best we can, and our intent is to bring good quality projects. So, we strive for that. This project is for Chris Joyce and his wife, sitting back here, Libby. They also live in Fairway currently as a tenant in a home nearby on Catalina Street. So, they've been trying to find an opportunity to live in a new home, and this one appeared. And also, I want to comment that the neighbor at the back road there is Sandy Durick, and she lives next door at 6029 Delmar, to the north of this subject property. So, it's nice to see someone immediately affected be in favor of it. So, what I wanted to comment about a couple of things were the exceptions. So, one of the exceptions for the life of me, I do not understand why it's in the code, and it probably should be taken up at some future date and removed, but on a side elevation, if you have a window above in the second floor in a two-story house that is not as large as one that is more or less below it, it's called out as an exception, which kind of is, I don't know, I can't think of any earthly reason why you would want that for architectural reasons. But nonetheless, we do want that as an exception, because the lower window is in a bathroom, and if it's a window near a toilet, you certainly don't want a large window there, whereas the window above is in a bedroom. And the architecture is essentially the same for this plan at 6033 that we built about five years ago nearby on Aberdeen. In fact, it's nearly identical. We made a few interior changes and added a window here there, but it's essentially the same home that now exists at 5938 Alhambra. The second exception that Basel brought up is the width of the driveway. Sort of as stated, we have a wider driveway at the house and then narrowing down to 16 feet at the right away, plus three-foot wings on each side. And I actually thought I was conforming to the rule, but my land surveyor drew it at 21 and a half feet wide, or 21.7, but I think the Joyce are willing to make that exactly fit the criteria at 20-foot wide at the house, so we can stipulate that we will make that Other than that, I think that we meet the impervious test, we've done the watershed study, we tried, and I think thoroughly believe that we've met all the requirements. So, we ask that you approve our request today. And, of course, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any additional questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Thank you.
If I may add one more clarification, the lot right now does not have a large shade tree at the front, and part of the recommendation is they need to install one large shade tree.
That's staff's recommendation?
That's staff, well, code.
Okay, just to clarify.
Yeah, it is in the report, so if you look at it, minimum three-inch caliper, and it has to be one of the approved large. If they install it in the right way, then it has to be part of the approved list.
But just a general comment statement, you know, the applicants previously, or the applicants, the people in the audience that spoke were concerned about runoff. And this here, the runoff is not contributing negatively towards the neighbors, but it is adding runoff to the street. And so, I don't know if that's something we need to revisit again, but at some point, if we continue to add runoff to the street, yes, there is going to be more runoff on each street. So, that's something we need to acknowledge and potentially investigate again.
We just spent three months on that, and?
But, I mean, to their concerns, they're worried about the runoff, and it's increasing, and it was concerned, that's because a lot of times the runoff's directed to the street to avoid the neighboring properties, and so.
Which it is, and if you increase it, let's say, a tenth each time, a tenth is 58 gallons per minute, you multiply that by the hundreds of permits we have, like, we're one district in the watershed, there's others that are upstream too, but it's a bigger issue, kind of watershed-wide, so.
Yeah, so, I guess maybe to address their concerns, they're not here, but that is the bigger picture of the runoff.
It's all fresh in your mind, so we can open that discussion again.
I just, I want to be understanding of their concerns and at least acknowledge where that's coming from. All right, any other, or any discussion?
I don't have any objection to the exception, and they said they would change the driveway to be the 20-foot, so I would support it.
I'm in support of the window if it's in the restroom, that does make sense from privacy perspective.
I don't have any objections to approving their request.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the plans as submitted, and approving the exception for the window deviation and rejecting the driveway in request that a 20-foot driveway be installed.
If you can revise it where you give me the authority to verify a revised site plan with the 20-foot.
Yeah, and then, yeah, it can be approved by staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Next item of business is item four, additional business, set the next meeting date for June 30th, 2025.
We do have, there's going to maybe be five or six applications because of this meeting being, so we do have actually two applications already in our, I know there are three or maybe more potentially coming.
Okay.
Because people miss the deadline for the meeting.
All right, last item of business is item five, a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion we adjourn?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.